People to. So please unmute yourselves. And. Dolores, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Of course.
Sorry, I'm having a really difficult time hearing. I don't know if it's because someone is unmuted. Or if there's background noise, but it sounds like a whirring noise in the background, almost like a washing machine.
All right, again, please, everyone mute yourself unless you're speaking. Dolores, please.
All right, are we ready? Right hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank God, I've memorized that.
You did great. Thank you so much for doing it for us. All right, roll call. Trustee David.
Present.
Trustee Manning.
Here, President.
Trustee Morris.
Here.
Here.
And President Allen Hinkin here. All right, very good. In your packet, you have the minutes from the February tenth meeting. Can I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Dolores, two seconds, okay? Discussion, any corrections? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Is that okay to do it that way? Aaron just raised his hand. One, two, three, four. Okay. Thank you. The minutes are approved. All right, we have a pretty full agenda, so let's get going. Any public comments on agenda items?
No, Grace indicated that we have not received any public comments.
Okay, and any public comments from the floor, anyone on the Zoom call by phone? Okay, no, okay, very good. Then let's take a look at. The draft resolution that we received in the packet. I hope you all have it in front of you. Can I hear a motion to approve it in order for us to discuss it? Motion?
I move to discuss the agenda item.
Okay, is there a second? Kaylin, thank you. All right, I'd like to give the floor to Robert to give us some background as to how this thing evolved.
All right, thank you very much. Following last month's library board meeting, I wrote a draft of this resolution as a starting point. And then I sent that draft to Recreation Director Carrie Smith and Eric Nebraska, Recreation Manager. And. And then after some. Several conversations between Eric and myself primarily. Eric and I threw a team's meeting. Crafted drafted the draft of the resolution as you see it. I will just say that it was. This is a new experience for all of us, so this is new territory, but I really appreciate Eric's help and. And we feel good about what's presented, but of course that's up to you all as a library board to decide on what you think about it. And I would invite Eric if you want to say anything in addition.
All right, thank you, Robert. You know, our intent all along, as you can imagine, was to capture, you know, the the purpose and, you know. And sort of your words, if you will, in this resolution, your your desires aboard and your recommendation. So we attempted to do our our best at providing that that sort of summary in this resolution. You know, so I I hope we've achieved at least. Close to achieving that goal and and. Tonight, there can certainly be discussion on the resolution, of course. We can make some minor non, some minor adjustments that don't necessarily change the. The meaning or the or the main. Focus of this resolution, but if you guys want to make any substantive changes to the resolution, that's. That's perfectly fine as a board, as you can imagine, we would then just as staff have to go back and. Make those significant changes and bring them back to the to the board. For a nut for adoption of those find that final resolution at the next board meeting. So tonight. We are, we can change, you know, words like the and and, but if there's any significant changes, you want to. Go in this direction, you want to go in that direction, we certainly would take that from the board and then bring that back to you and. Another resolution next month.
Um, can I make a comment or maybe suggestion, question, clarification?
Wait, so let's.
Go ahead.
Well, let's do now spend some time on clarifying things. Are there any words, any phrases that. That you want some expansion on, and then we'll move into more substantive suggestions if there are any. So please, Kaylin.
Okay, yeah, just a clarification. I know at our last board meeting, when we discussed the forgiveness, how far back would it date? I I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had talked about eliminating fines before the past five years, or was it within the last five years? And I don't see anything significantly outlining like a timeline within the resolution. I do see eliminating the policy in practice, which seems altogether. Like moving forward, but I wasn't sure if the language wanted to reflect the discussion we had last time about. How far back we would eliminate? Is there a limit on it or not? I don't know if we ever came to a final conclusion on that.
Yes, let me. Can I jump in on that, Eric?
Go ahead, Robert.
I I would have done well to explain that as part of my initial explanation because. I I did draft two different resolutions to begin with, and and Eric and I did discuss those. And the because that was the that was my understanding of the intent of the board. It was really two separate issues. One is. Is contained within this first resolution that is on the agenda, and that would eliminate overdue fines moving forward. And then the second resolution was to address. The question of whether past due fines and fees could be eliminated, forgiven, waived, whatever. So originally, it was two separate resolutions that Eric and I worked on. And. And this, the situation regarding the second resolution, we're going to get to later on the agenda. That's my initial response. Eric, what would you add?
Yeah, we added that as a discussion item for continued discussion. It's it's item eight. Our assistant city manager is on the on the Zoom call. She'll have. Some information for us and we can discuss that that particular topic at that time. There are some, after doing some additional research, there might be some legalities associated with that and some other information, so. She'll provide that information at that time.
All right, thank you. Kaylin, is that sufficient? This, your read is right that this is a forward looking resolution and. The issue about past fines, past fees, we'll have to get to later. John, did you clarify a question?
Yeah, a little bit. On paragraph three. Middle sentence there, that's an assumption on our part. I'm uncomfortable with making those kind of assumptions. It should read, in my view, whereas many of the community members like to benefit. From accessing library materials, we don't wish them to be deferred from applying for a library card. That sentence are more likely to be deferred. It's an assumption on our part and probably shouldn't be there.
Okay, well, when we come to. Changes that we want to recommend, you'll want to bring that up again, okay? Debbie, trustee Rotaskins.
Yeah, no, you can call me Debbie. I kind of am on the same section as Dr. Manning. And I think, I don't know how you feel about it, John, but I think if we just take out the because. Because that's the assumption, correct? And maybe leave it as the 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 main intent is that. You know, to keep them from accessing library materials who may may be deterred. For summary or for either just leave that blank or for some reason, rather than putting in that assumption there, would that would that help?
In addition to the word because, you move to word more.
Again, I'd like to suggest we hold both of these comments. I just want to make sure that everyone has had a chance to ask any questions about the document as written. Any issues with any of the language? Okay, is it okay? Okay, so I take it we're moving now into the more substantive kinds of. Possibly substantive kinds of changes that 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 might require. A reworking of this, which would, just to be clear, delay it for a month or more as as the rewrite happens. Okay, so, John, you want to restate your concern about paragraph three?
Paragraph three, where it says, those who are more likely to be deferred.
Yeah.
I would I would take out the words more likely to be deferred and have it read, whereas many of the community members who could benefit. From accessing library materials. Could be deferred from applying for the library card because of fear of having to pay.
Okay. Debbie, is that captured?
Well, I don't have a problem with the wording at all. I think it's pretty simple and to the point. I was just trying to address John's concern. To see if maybe we could cut something out rather than adding something, but basically he he said the same thing in just a slightly different way, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine.
Great, okay, so to Robert and to Eric, is that considered a substantive change that would require revision of this?
I don't think it would require revision, but what do you think, Eric?
Could you, can you please restate what you guys are 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 wanting to, you just want to take out are more likely to be deterred? That's what you want to take out?
It's like we need to get her.
Could you type it in the chat so we can all like hear it and see it and look at the way it would look compared like before and after? That would be helpful, I think. Does he written out in the chat?
I, I'm willing to try that. I I think I captured what. What in my little notes here, so I'm gonna try being what you just said.
Okay, while Robert's doing that, and thank you for doing this. Other more substantive concerns about this? Okay, well, I'm hearing none. So.
Well, that's pretty good news.
I do feel like overall it did capture our discussion from last time, and it was really nicely laid out, very organized. It had a nice flow with all the different parts of our arguments, both on a social level as well as an economic level.
Yeah. Once we make, we resolve this issue, I will be interested in hearing. Now what happens to this resolution?
Yeah, well, I mean, so Robert's going to be typing in. Doc, Dr. Manning, well, we'll just wait for Robert to to get this typed up, I guess.
This is how we think.
Can I make the resolution? Drop the word doctor when referred to me.
Absolutely, absolutely, trustee Manning, whatever you would, or whatever you would prefer.
Well, unless you're my patient, I refer you to call me John.
Okay.
All right, is everybody looking in the chat? Yeah, okay, great. Whereas many of the community members who could benefit the most from accessing library materials. Could be deterred from applying for a library card because of the fear of having to pay overdue fines. That's how it read, that's how.
Good with that.
The amended reservation would be.
Does that capture what you were saying, John?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess while we're at it, if we're thinking about suggestive language. The word fear is maybe also an assumption. It could be other feelings that keep people from paying it. Could be not even fear. It could be a fact, like financial inability. Like literally not having the money to pay it overdue. Fine, fee, fee fine. I feel like fee five oh form, um, maybe just replacing the word fear.
With?
Inability, because it could be. Inability or inability caused by emotional things like shame, fear, how how those emotions can stop people from taking action.
I I wouldn't be specific. It's just inability is fine. Let let us fill in the fill in the blanks.
Because of an inability. To pay overdue fines.
Okay.
Is that substantive, Eric, Robert?
Kaylin, did that address what you were saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I I it's it's a, it's my opinion that. These are fairly minor changes. These are semantic type changes. I mean, I I think the board could could move to adopt the resolution with the with these with these minor changes. I mean, the the purpose and the. You know, and the and the. I mean, the the purpose of what you're trying to say here, it to me doesn't seem like it's being being changed, so I think we can make. I think we can move forward if if these are the changes you'd like to make.
Okay, thank you.
But I just, I would just, I would just ask the board to maybe when they make, when you make your result, when you make your motion to approve. That you officially read into the record how you would want this particular section to read. I know Robert typed it, but I would really like, I'd prefer if we actually read it into the record. What exactly you want it to say?
Okay, so we've dealt with paragraph three. Are there any other issues? That you'd like to see changed in this resolution? Are are we ready to move on to approving it?
Do you want to prove it now, and let what Eric just said?
I do. Let's make a motion to approve and second, and then we'll read in the this this amendment, okay?
Okay.
So can I hear a motion to approve the amended?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so let's be clear. The amended paragraph three says. Whereas many of the community members who could benefit the most from accessing library materials. Could be deterred from applying for a library card because of an inability and inability. To pay overdue fines.
Okay. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
This is a roll call vote?
All right, this will be a roll call vote. Thank you. Okay. Trustee David.
I.
Trustee Rotaski Heinz.
I.
Trustee Morris. I take that to be an I. Trustee Manning.
I.
And trustee Hinkin, I. Very good. We have a resolution. Can I ask now what now what happens?
Well, first, I'd like to cheer. Yes. Congratulations, library board trustees of City of Palm Dale. I think this is wonderful. And then I'll let Eric answer your question.
So that is a good question. The next step here would be for us to. Get the item on the city council agenda. To present to the city council your library board recommendation. As as I think we've mentioned in the past. We would ask, and we can work out details in the future, we would ask. At least for President Hinkin to join us with that presentation and kind of present the board's. You know, desires here and kind of speak to the conversation and. The information that you guys have been working on over the last year. So we'll we'll draft a a staff report and present that, your recommendation to the city council for. For consideration.
Okay, all right, great. And and the staff report will include things like fiscal impact, that kind of stuff?
That's correct. It'll it'll include. I I don't want to, it'll include many of the things that you guys have been discussing that Robert and his team put together. Station, I mean, just thinking out loud, we do have a lot of the information that we need to move forward because. Quite frankly, we're not going to change any of the information that's presented to the city council. We'll present the information. That was presented to you and present your resolution to them and let them take it from. For sure, yes.
All right, thank you. With everyone's permission, we're going to move on to item eight. Discussion regarding accrued patron fines and fees, and this is sort of the backward looking issue that is, can we? Can we cancel? Can we forgive? Can we excuse past fines and fees? And so who wants to address this from the city, Robert, or?
I already gave my little explanation on how we got to this point, and so through Eric and then.
Okay, and and I believe Ms. Ricky might speak to this too.
Right, our our assistant city manager is is on the on the Zoom Zoom meeting. Marie, are you there? Oh, we're having trouble hearing you, Marie.
Are you muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, trustees. So I was approached to consider waiving all past fees on certain individuals who did have a fine. And so it's okay, I believe we can do it because. The fees were not recorded on the city's receivable book, so that's a good thing that we weren't anticipating bringing in that revenue. The only item that we would have to look at is. Whether or not the equitable and the fairness of it is. And not only that, though, I believe that some of these fines are so old that we did. We are, we may have impacted certain people's credit scores. And so even forgiving the fine, we would have to go back and correct those items as well. So there are some consequences to us just waiving those fines. We'd have to go back and rectify any actions that we're taking against these individuals. But it's definitely something that we can do. It's an administrative action. So if the board of trustees chooses to move forward with that, they would do the same thing with the resolution recommending it. And then we would bring that to the city manager, and it would be at his discretion to waive those fees and fines.
Do you have any numbers on about how many patrons that would be affected by that? I like the. The credit score reporting and we'd have to do retroactive damage control.
I believe Robert has the data. He provided that in the last report when looking at the fees and fines.
Yes, I do not have the exact answer to your question, Kaylin. I I could get that.
Current library accounts are blocked due to fines or fees. And they're unable to use the library. An account is blocked from accessing the library services at $10. Does that sound right, Robert and Jamie Lee?
Yes, that is true.
Robert, would you be able to re- re- receive that information on how many accounts have been? Impacted by sending them to collections? Is that something that's obtainable?
It is obtainable. We don't have that right now. We we can get that data.
All right, and what year did you pull this data from? From, I don't have that document in front of me, I apologize. And I ask that because credit scores weren't even in existence until the mid to late eighties. So for example, if we have accounts that have been blocked since 1971 or 1963. Those wouldn't even be affected by credit scores, and I I think I'm less concerned about. And I'll respectfully say this, about the time it would take the city, because at the end of the day, the city's job is the city's job. I'm more concerned about equity issues where if we have 21,000 people in a city like ours whose credit scores have gone down. Making them less likely to obtain housing, less likely to obtain credit, lines of credit, less likely to be able to qualify for. Things you need as an adult because of a library fine of over $10, that seems harmful. And I would hate for the library to be at the root of that.
Two, two things I would chime in with. Just to clarify, so pension accounts are blocked at $10. However, they are not sent to collections unless it's $50 or more. So that there's a variation there and. And I can tell you that the data in the report.
Grace, if I, I'm sorry, Robert, Grace, if you're the administrator, can you mute your line, please?
I don't think it's Grace. Okay, so so card, so patrons are sent to. Okay, so so card, so patrons are sent to collection at fifty dollars, not ten. So that's just a little distinction. And the the data that Eric is referring to goes back to nineteen ninety-four. So we do not have data before nineteen ninety-four.
So does that mean we have to go through one by one twenty-eight thousand different accounts?
Perhaps, from what uh assistant city manager, Ricky shared, perhaps.
Could there be the option to notify patrons like like if we decide to move forward with this and? There is something to do as far as far, like if a patron said, well, wait, well, this ruined my credit back in, you know, two thousand and three. I want that erased, where we wouldn't literally do it for every single patron, but we'd have it available as an option upon request. If your credit has been negatively impacted by your overdue fines that have now been forgiven. And you would like the city to, you know, send a letter on your behalf to the credit reporting bureaus. Like notify the librarian or fill out this Google form or something like that. Where that way we're not doing twenty-one thousand account. Fixes, but we're more giving people the availability and the opportunity to, should they seek it. To be honest, most people probably don't know, aren't aware, or wouldn't really go through the means to do it. But there might be some people who say, oh, yeah, three years ago that happened and I want to fix that. So maybe we just give the option that they can? Is that allowed?
You know, um Sheilin, I think that is a really good compromise, because I think when this goes before the council. The use of city resources is going to be an issue, even though, you know, we would like it not to be. It's going to be an issue. That sounds like a compromise in there that might be a little bit more workable. I kind of like your idea.
Ms. Ricky, your thoughts, please?
If I can just make a suggestion, if this is the trustees' will that they want to move. You guys want to move forward with waiving these fines. Just give us the directive and from the staff level, we'll make it happen. Uh again, this is an administrative act, so this is something we would take to the city manager to review. And then he could sign off on the waiver of these past due fees and fines. And I, as an analogy, for example, we have business licenses that have penalties. That business, small businesses couldn't pay as a result of COVID. And so, you know, a business will reach out to us and say, hey, we cannot pay for X Y Z reason. And so we have made exceptions for some of these small local businesses because of current economic conditions. So again, if that's the will, we can definitely make sure that we take care of it for you and um. Make sure it was a fair and equitable process. Should we run into anything, we will definitely bring it back to the board of trustees. But overall, if that's your will, we can definitely bring it forth to the city manager for his consideration.
Thank you. John Manning, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, Ethn- Ethnaree just spoke, she was addressed my whole thing. I would think just leave it up to the city council and staff. But if they elect to proceed, I think a single letter saying all past fee, all past fines are now rebuked and uh. Anything on your record has been removed, leave it at that. We don't really need a response from anyone if you cover everyone with just that single line. But again, that's a uh uh that's a problem I put in the hands of staff. They're experienced in that and we are not.
Okay, so Robert, can we direct the staff to come back to the board with a resolution on the subject?
Yes, so my understanding from this discussion is that unless the board of trustees. Consensus has changed, I don't think it has, uh your desire would be that we that we now work on a a draft resolution for next month's meeting. That would uh. That would address removing fines and fees uh from the past. And that that be presented to the library board trustees. That would be written as a recommendation. To the city and then as uh Marie said, it would go to the city manager. So is that what you'd like us to do?
I think so. Trustee Rotuski Hines?
Um yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we're just talking about overdue right here. We're not talking, correct? We're not talking about dismissing lost materials, damaged materials. We're speaking specifically overdue right now, correct? And forgiving the past.
That's a good question, because my understanding from last month's meeting was that the board's. Desire was that everything in the past. All fees, all damaged materials, all overdue fines, that everything would be forgiven or waived or deleted. In the past.
I was under the impression that it was the past for overdue, but that the. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the board was in support of patrons um paying. Fines for damaged and lost materials, since that was an actual loss to the library. Am I correct in saying that or am I missing something?
That's what I remember. I I remember it that way as well. Shane, thank you.
John Manning, please.
I agree with what Debbie and Cheryl just said. Also, that was my impression. And also in the letter, do not indicate that any future damage, not fines, but damage uh is not covered by this direction.
Well, I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting and it says. After some debate, the library board members decided to have a resolution created that recommended the city council the elimination of overdue fines. The library board also agreed that the current fee structure should be left intact. One of the key components mentioned was that the resolution would have to outline how far back the fines. Should be eliminated. The library board also discussed about it. Okay.
Thank you.
So we did talk about. Forgiving fines that were older than five years, as I recall. Um but the fines that went back only five years were still going to be um on the books. Does that sound right?
No, not to me. I said, I I know. As I recall, we talked about all fines. There wasn't any time on it. We uh we made an exception for damage, not for time. There's a distinct difference, of course, between those two things.
Well, fines refers to books that are damaged or lost or?
Yeah, fines that are related to damage, but not fines which are related to just being things overdue.
No, correct, but those are considered fees. That's a difference, fees versus.
I see your point, okay.
I remember it the same way that we were going to all overdue fees were going to be wiped and we weren't going to do those anymore. That that was kind of my understanding, that into the future, we weren't going to be doing overdue as well.
Yeah, fees, but fines.
Yes, you're correct now, and I I stand corrected.
We're going to stay on the books um within the past five years. But but prior to that, I guess, prior to two thousand and sixteen, they would be uh forgiven, waived, excused, written off.
I would encourage with that.
Okay, so is that the direction that we wanted to give to Robert in crafting another resolution for us? Yes? Okay.
If I could, if I if I could, uh president Hankin. If you guys, uh if you if you could just summarize for us again, just very specific. I mean, you know, do you want it five years? Do you want just over de- overdue um, you know, fines um waived? So we so we can bring back the correct resolution. I just want to make sure that. I mean, last time, Robert provided some pretty clear guidance on what a fine and a fee is. Overdue and all, so I just want to make sure that, because quite fr- quite honestly, even Robert and I had a little disagreement on what we remembered. You you read into the record, the uh the minutes. So are the minutes accurate? Is that what you want us to bring back? I just want to make sure we're clear. You, can you mute your uh your line, please?
Who's the host of the meeting? They can hard mute or they can just mute. She may not be hearing.
I think the host is actually the one that's unmuted.
Okay, maybe next time, make a co-host, make Robert a co-host.
Well, good. She she let, she did it, okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, trustees, but I believe the board's sense of things is that. All past fees, fees, overdue fees will be forgiven, waived. And and then uh not be um imposed in the future. With respect, though, to fines. The fines will remain collectible within the past five years. Fines that occurred prior to, let's say, two thousand and sixteen, so five years past. Will be written off, waived, excused, forgiven. Okay. Robert, Eric, is that kind of clear?
I I need to clarify, um again, the terminology fines and fees. Just because in in my in my mind, fines are related to things that are returned late.
Yes, I'm sorry, I used the wrong terminology.
That's right. Fees are things that are charged for collection agency, loss and damage, replacement costs.
Right.
Processing fees.
Right. So so you understand me better. Thank you. Okay, if that's clear, can we, are we ready to move on?
Well, now, based on that understanding, could you restate the intent, Alan, please?
Okay. All fines related to overdue material. Will be forgiven retroactively and will not be imposed proactively into the future. These, however, related to damaged or lost items. Will remain collectible for the past five years. Prior to that, prior to two thousand and sixteen, those will be um written off. Waived.
Uh thank you. I apologize for putting you through that, but um we just wanted to make sure that we were correct. And so I I I understand. Robert, are you good? I I am and.
Yes.
We are we are recording this, right? So we can refer back.
That is a good question. I hope it is true.
I I don't see the little recording thing going.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Trustees, are we ready to move on to item number nine now? Okay. Okay, um. Uh item number nine has to do with uh uh the local history policy. It is something that's new to us and it's going to require a little bit of explanation. I hope you had a chance to take a look at it and I I'd like to ask. Is it Robert or Jamie Lee who wants to present this?
I'm I'm going to start out. Uh thank you very much. And again, thank you, Marie, for your all your help with the past discussion. Yes, and just briefly, we have a local history collection. I think you all know that. However, and and we have a collection development policy that addresses the development of library collection, generally speaking. The local history collection is considered a special collection, quote unquote, and in in library jargon. That is used for any kind of a special collection that is treated differently than the general collection. That's basically what a special collection is. Uh in in this case, and with any kind of a local history collection. There really should be a separate policy because the materials in that collection are just different than the general collection. Uh so with that in mind, our current policy has a paragraph that basically just says. That we have a local history collection, but that's all it says. So this is an attempt to improve our our practice and create a policy. I asked Jamie Lee, uh the assistant director, to join us here tonight, primarily for this agenda item. And if you had a chance to, I'll say a couple of other things on my tour of Jamie Lee. If you had a chance to look at it yet. The uh wherever it says library director and then parentheses or designate. Uh Jamie Lee would be the designate as far as how things are structured right now. And just so you're aware, she is uh that's been delegated to her to manage that collection, oversee it. And the other thing I would say is that the intent tonight is just to present this draft, so you can see it for the first time. And then the idea is that it would be an action item next month for you to consider approving it. Uh Jamie Lee, what would you say about this?
Um so the local history collection includes all kinds of items. Um yearbooks dating back as far as nineteen sixty-five. Um newspaper, uh our microfilm also is considered part of that. We also have the Strausberg collection, which was a donated collection from one of the local historians. It didn't have a lot of direction and because if you go to certain libraries, their local history collection includes local authors. Um you know, special books regarding the city um that it is a part of. Um but our local history collection uh isn't so well defined. Um it includes paintings that I'm not sure where they came from. And uh relics that I'm also not sure where they came from. Uh including um a gavel that I still don't know what that is and uh ashtrays from the playhouse. Um so it's just kind of become a dumping ground for a lot of stuff. And I feel that at least if we have a, you know, a direction, we can say no to certain things. We can make sure that we get certain things. Like we have gone very far out of our way to make sure that we have a very consistent yearbook collection. Because we want to make sure that people can go back and see, you know, old pictures, see how the schools have changed. We've become a a reference place for, uh I remember in my school year when they did um the Palmdale High School yearbook. We went back in that same like thirty years in the past. To see like old pictures, to see what it was like back then. So we've become a resource for things like that. Um but it doesn't have any direction and it is kind of a mess right now. Um so at least if we have a collection policy, we know what to keep and what to get rid of. Um and you know, what we would like to add, like what we want to go out of our way to make sure that.
This came on.
Um so that's why this is very important.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
Thank you.
And along those lines, I I would just add that uh. I I think you all understand this concept. One of the beauties of having a policy, a written policy approved by. The governing body, whatever governing body it is, it also protects staff. I say that candidly, uh so that when we decide to remove something from the collection. We have a policy, or if we decide, as Jamie Lee mentioned, you know, if we say no diplomatically to receiving something, we have a policy to point to. That backs us up. So that's the background to this draft. And uh any questions at this point regarding what you what you have?
Kaylin, please.
Thanks. Um yes, question. Are we making suggestions um to include within this tonight? Or are we just, you're introducing it to us, we're going to stew on it and we'll discuss next time?
It's mainly just for you, for us to stew on, uh but if if you have something already that you want, well, we're not going to wordsmith it tonight.
For sure.
If you want to to mention something now.
Yeah, I can keep it brief and succinct and you can integrate it however you feel best. And if the board, you know, is in agreement. Um I didn't see, when I when I think about history and collections of um historical items, primary resources, et cetera. Um I think about the way that we narrate history depends a lot on who's contributing to the narrative. Who's providing um the photographs and the recordings and the documents? So for example, if we have one primary demographic of people that is providing that history. It excludes other groups that may have existed and made important contributions unintentionally. Are you following me so far?
I think so.
So I think I would like to see something very specific in there about making sure when we're building this collection. That we're making an intentional effort to include the histories and the narratives of different groups of people throughout the valley. For example, the black community in the Antelope Valley and in Palmdale very often gets forgotten and overlooked. Um especially in red z- redlined areas like um Sun Village and Daisy Gibson area, like. How how much stuff is, and that's technically Palmdale. That's right in the Palmdale um, area code, even though it's borderline Little Rock. Um, the Jewish community, the Korean community, the hit um, Mexican-American immigration movement that happened, you know, due to immigration changes in the eighties and nineties. So, um, I think when I personally, I used to be a part of um, the Little Rock Historical Society. Looked at what kinds of resources were available to look at the history of our area. It primarily focused on white families only. And there wasn't a lot of information about the contributions of other groups. So I'd just like to see something more intentional in there, um, because again, when we come to Paul and what are we taking in, what are we eliminating? We wanna make sure we're narrating the history of our area fairly and equitably. In my perspective.
I very much appreciate that uh, suggestion and I, I I agree. And I will work on including language that is more, that intentionally strives for including uh. All ethnic groups, uh, backgrounds that are represented by the community. I, uh, and and not that you were saying this, I I will not attempt to try to list what all those different groups might be. Cause then run the risk of missing, of leaving somebody out unintentionally.
Certified.
But but language, yeah, I I I agree. To purposely say that we, that it is one of our purposes and 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 goals. To include all uh, aspects of the community.
Thank you. Just here, just behind us.
Yeah, I just, um, I wanted to bring up again what I found really useful at at the library as a teacher. And those were um, a lot of the old photographs. Um, the things that had to do with the original settlers, the graveyard, the old graveyard that's in Palmdale. Um, Sun Village is a really important, um, really important aspect to be collecting material on. Um, because it's basically in the whole United States, they know of that, of that settlement. It's important, it's important to our, to black history. So I think we really ought to put some deliberate effort into getting some things for Sun Village out there. Um, I think they, they really deserve that. And then uh, just the original settlers, photos, the way the town used to look. Before we had traffic signals, things like like that. I realize that, you know, that's not specific enough, but I know that um, for photos and things, I think those are really important, just about all of them. Um, great use. I just knocked my drink on the floor, so I'm gonna disappear from that.
Thank you.
I, oh, uh, one of the things that I also wanna mention is that in it, it doesn't really, uh, because in making sure that we have these things. We also wanna make sure that we're able to preserve them. Um, with the way that the room is right now, we don't have a good way to do that. Um, and that's another thing that I think could be, uh, i- if we define what we have, you know, like clippings, photographs. Um, what is in the collection, then we can make sure that we have the facilities and the abilities to actually uh, maintain them. Otherwise, they're just sitting in a room and degrading somewhere else. Um, so I think that's another reason why it is important to have this kind of uh, policy. So that way we can make sure that we're able to do that.
On that note, is there a type of technology that we're using to um, basically make backups of things like photographs and written records? And anything that's like just on paper, because then it would save physical space. And you know, you could have a couple iPads available for the public, like, oh, here's an iPad that's all like photos and they're tagged and cataloged. Here's an album just of letters from prestigious people in the community, et cetera. And then all the hard copies of things that do take up a lot of physical space could be in a storage unit or something where they're not taking up space in the actual display area.
I'll I'll jump in and say that uh, for the most part, no, we are not doing that currently. And that's one of the reasons why we need this policy is self, give us direction. There there is a section. Excuse me. I mean, I haven't looked at it again since, in a while, since I, since I worked on it, but there is a section in there that talks about. Uh, preserving and digitizing and so that. And then some things we will not attempt to keep. Look, we're gonna move away from paper, like like old newspapers are wonderful, but they just don't last. And and so that, I think that addresses what what you're talking about.
Thank you. John Manning.
How far are we gonna extend this? You mentioned up here in the beginning, the fir- first line, Palmdale as well as the Antelope Valley. The Antelope Valley really extends from uh, Rosamund, if you will, down to Hackton, out to uh, Wrightwood. Do we include all of that in here or is it? Uh, you know, it's it's a pretty much of an open door and probably should be in the early days before there was any incorporated cities or unincorporated. Really, Antelope Valley did extend to that extent. It really did. So we can now understand the Palmdale in immediate environments such as, uh, we only gonna go as far as Pariblasse and stop there?
Yeah, it's a nice.
Maybe like borderline counties like Kern and San Bernardino bordering areas like Phelan, Yano, like you said, Wrightwood, Pariblasse.
Or even that Acon and Argadose, which both of those areas do play a significant part in our history. Uh, when you have the words Palmdale as well as Antelope Valley, it may be uh, easier to say Antelope Valley rather than be. Rather than narrower to just Palmdale.
I think that's an excellent point. And just so you know, we're, I'm gonna say a couple of things. One is philosophically, I I agree with what I think I hear you saying, John. Uh, because I think regional, regionally, and every one of these, the last libraries, I didn't have a policy either. They have their large uh, local history collection. And so I wrote one for them and uh. The uh, but yeah, regional. That's what I'm thinking of philosophically. When it comes to wordsmithing, I I accept what you're saying. That's what we'll get into the details, you know, next month. And it may be even beyond it. We we may not wrap it up next month, but things like what you just said. Is is the kind of direction that we will need from the board on how we uh, how we word this policy.
I'd just like to second um, trustee Manning's comment. I also agree. Being of even our, um, although we're rural, we have a huge tie to the impact of um, LA, the city of LA being what it is today. Just due to things like the Aqueduct and Mulholland and that passes right through our valley and. Um, we, we don't get the recognition we deserve. So I I just wanna second what you said, Mr. Manning.
Alright, any other comments? I certainly get what you were talking about Jamie Lee about just becoming a dumping ground. I know our synagogue, I can't tell you how many paintings we have of dancing Hasidic rabbis. That people don't want on their walls anymore. It's uh, and we can't turn them down, you know, they're, we're needing them. Okay. Um, we look forward to seeing the final or semi-final version of the policy next month. Thanks for that. Moving on on the agenda, uh, the director's report, please, Robert.
Alright, thank you very much. There's several things I'd like to report on. Uh, first of all, thank you to those of you who were able to attend the brief but very worthwhile essay contest award ceremony via Zoom on March third. It was very well received by the youth and their families that participated. For your information, the library has applied for a five hundred dollar grant to fund a grab and go event in connection with Dia de los Menos, which is. Referred to also as the International Day of Reading on Friday, April thirtieth, if this one was a holdout. If awarded, the plan is to purchase high quality, low cost books in Spanish that will be given away to families that attend that day. Also, for your information, the library will be applying. We'll receive word that there will be, you know, few to apply, have done it yet. But we will be applying for a seven, seventy-five hundred dollar grant to fund lunch at the library pop-up sites. At the summer lunch sites in Palmdale School District, similar to what was done last year. I'm happy to announce that Fon Campbell has joined the library team as our new library associate, three storytime lead person. Uh, Fon comes to us with a bachelor's degree in English and a master's degree in biblical counseling. Fon taught high school English for eight years and then became. I appreciate a wonderful job. And then she saw the light, that that's my, my uh, my plug. Became a school library clerk first at Sundown Elementary School in Westside School District. And then became the head librarian at Desert Christian Elementary School, where she conducted storytime sessions for hundreds of students each week. Uh, Fon is passionate about libraries and is very excited to be working with us. She began her duties on March first. With Fon's arrival, the library is now gearing up for a full ten week. Pre-recorded series of storytime sessions that will be made available online with the community on a regular schedule. Uh, two sessions, two sessions in English each week and one in Spanish each week. Uh, the first session is in virtual format will begin the week of April fifth. In the near future, each of you as trustees will receive information regarding and an invitation to attend a special meeting as part of the library's strategic planning process. In fact, this will be a special library board of trustees meeting outside of the monthly meeting. Uh, per Brown Act and will be public notice as such. Again, you'll receive more info, uh, a more formal invitation soon, but please take note. That this special meeting is currently scheduled for Thursday, May thirteenth. From one to two fifteen PM. Now, I know that's in the middle of the day. Uh, hopefully you, your schedules can be arranged so you can participate in that meeting. This is a uh, this is a big deal for us. And we need your, your input into this strategic planning process. Okay, uh, I have some breaking news for you. With COVID case numbers improving and the gradual release of the vaccines to the populace. Libraries in LA County are now able to open to walk-in services under certain guidelines. And Palmdale City Library intends to do so Monday, March twenty-second. Key components of our reopening conditions include posting of guidelines at the front entrance. Max maximum occupancy of thirty-five patrons in the building at a time. A one hour per day time limit per patron that will be enforced. The return of public computer access. But socially distanced from each other, which will result in about half the number of computers being available when compared to pre-COVID service services and access. A public seating and tables will not be returned to the library yet. There will be no acceptance of cash or coin by staff members, so any payments made to the library will need to be done online at this time. Limited service hours of when the library is open at this time will continue with the schedule that we have currently. With a target date of May tenth. After we get several weeks under our belt of returning to the pre-COVID service hours, which has us going into the evenings and includes four hours on Sunday afternoon. So that's a general picture of what we're planning on again, um, with this reopening beginning Monday, March twenty-second. Uh, I'll come back to that to answer any questions you may have. Uh, my last bullet on my report is just for information. My hip replacement surgery is still on. Uh, from March twenty-ninth. So Jamie Lee will be covering as the director at the uh, April library board meeting. So going back to the breaking news, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? Uh, guys, a question. You you said um, um, something about um, guidelines coming down regarding libraries. Whose guidelines? Where'd they come from?
Well, the, the main person that that we in the city has been looking to is the LA County Department of Public Health. And and they're the ones that uh, yeah, yeah, they, they're really the ones that we've been turning to, looking at. And and with the numbers improving, it's now official that the public libraries can reopen under these, these kind of protocols and guidelines. And I can tell you that uh, through, it's mainly through the forty-member Southern California Library Cooperative I'm hearing about. It seems like every independent city library is now making plans to reopen. LA County has not set a date yet, but they they have the challenge of, their employees have been reassigned to do other things during this emergency pandemic situation. So I don't know about them reopening yet, but just about every other library is now talking about dates and plans for, for reopening in the next couple of months.
Uh, questions for Robert, trustees?
Okay. I just had, I had one. Um, it's just, Robert, could you repeat that date in May again, um, for the special meeting? I just wanted to make sure that I got.
Uh, Thursday, May thirteenth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will we see a notice of that, I assume?
Yes. Yeah. And again, it will be for, for the Brown Act, it will be a special meeting that will need to uh, convene similar to this, but. But the one item on the agenda will be uh, discussion about. Str- strategic planning for the future of library services in the city of Palmdale. Uh, Sarah Roberts is a, an administrator that works for Library Systems and Services, you know, my, my boss that manages the library. And Sarah will be uh, conducting that, that meeting herself.
Alright, well, thank you, Robert. We all wish you well with the surgery coming up. Um, I guess this will be the last time we'll see you before the surgery, so.
That's cool, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Wish you a quick and complete recovery.
Thank you.
Alright, item number eleven, staff comments?
I don't have any comments other than, other than just to say thank you for uh, working with us on that resolution. Um, and hopefully we can bring back uh, the next resolution uh, to your satisfaction. But thank you for your patience as you, we worked through all this.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. All right, trustee comments? John?
Robert, do you have any uh, updates on Jesse Davidson?
I do not. He and I exchanged a couple of emails several weeks ago. And I I sent an email to him about two weeks ago. I have not heard back from him, so. I'm not sure where we stand and frankly, now with this reopening, that could. From our standpoint, it will push back plans to to start a virtual program. All uh, a- as part of us reopening. A few programs that we have currently planned will continue, but new programs are gonna be put on hold for now. Cause we, we have a lot of uh. Uh, getting back into something like pre-COVID, but yeah, very different, so. But that's lies on that, John.
Has he been made aware of that?
Uh, no, because it was actually finalized today about eleven AM. So I I need to follow up with you.
Okay. Well, Kaylin writes in the chat to thank you all, all the city staff, library staff, for all your good work behind the scenes. So yeah, I would, I think we all second that. So thank you very, very much. Um. Uh, trustees, we did a great job. It was a little over an hour. We covered a lot of ground and you worked really hard. We all worked really hard and we got a lot done. So yay for us. Um. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn at six thirty-seven, six thirty-seven?
I think Jamie Lee should start bringing that gavel to the meetings for you to officially adjourn. Like I need that gavel. Let's make it a thing.
We should. I mean, you should be standing there. Might as well.
I'm gonna get right.
We're adjourned as of six thirty-seven.
Alan, I'll take, I'll take a.